Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Are we doing introductions first?
Oh, we should do introductions first. Sorry, I got sucked in. Polly Rico.
Hi.
Rick Bartholomew.
Caroline Clark.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hi.
There are two other board members who aren't here tonight. Rick and Polly are who are board members.
Okay.
Michael Wright is not here. Michael Horgan is going to be joining us. So you have our clerk and several administrators in the room. So why don't we go around? I think you know some of them.
Some of them, yeah.
Eric Grammer's high school principal.
Rachel Reynolds, middle school principal.
Jessica Villanueva's principal.
Amanda Blaney, board secretary.
Michelle Luescher, elementary school principal.
Morgan Daddell, business manager.
My name's Caroline Clark. I'm a life long resident of Ennisburg, at Ennisburg High School. Graduated from Linden State. I currently am the office manager over at Spears.
Nice.
Sorry, I'm a little bit late. I have two little ones.
We're getting them.
My husband was running late, so I had to run a daycare at last minute and come here. But, um, sorry, I'm late.
That's okay.
That's what I also...
Happy to welcome you. So you get to dive right in.
Yes.
To the business of this board.
So when I first went... Oh, do you have an agenda?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, exactly.
Come over here.
So, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the previous minutes and the reports.
So moved.
And I can second?
You don't need... We don't need a second. We don't need this.
They're super tiny boards. Kind of like the tiny house.
Yeah.
Like the tiny house? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then all opposed? Okay, do we need to re-prioritize our agenda at all?
I'd like to make a request that undermined. We're going to talk about negotiations.
Okay.
And Jessica Villanueva is in that section. She has to get home with her children.
Yes.
So Jess, do you want to...
Yep.
Sorry, you handed all this up to me.
I'll just take back what I handed to you a minute ago.
Should we... We have to go into executive session.
For that? Okay.
Yep.
So do I have a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Should we step back?
Okay. And all in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're in executive session at 4:41.
No motions on the other one.
And then you went to executive.
Oh, I'm sorry. And so on the student issue, no motions pending.
So do you have times for...
I do.
...to exit?
Okay. Yep. So that's exiting the first.
And then 5:18 to 5:22.
Yes, exactly.
Is the student issue correct? So I'll go into negotiations update. There's not a lot to share on that, other than we have received the letter from the union stating that they wish to open negotiations. Sorry, I took the agenda away from you. So we have a... Our negotiation group will have a meeting in the next couple of weeks to just identify what some of the goals of negotiations would be. So who is on the negotiations council? So Rick will be there at that meeting.
Uh, Rick and one of the mics, or both mics.
Half and half. It's a half and half.
I'm on paras.
You're on paras. The other Michael is on teachers.
Yeah.
So you... That's pretty much what I have for negotiations at this point. I wanted to provide some clarity to this board about high school choice. So I'm gonna send out a packet, and I'm gonna go through it with you. So I think that it's good to get all of this clear to make sure that our practices match statute. And I've outlined from poring through statute exactly the way our process should be for public high school choice under Act 129. So at your January meeting, I'm gonna be asking the board to do two things. We have a deadline up before February 1st to identify the capacity of our school, or the capacity of students, the number of students who we're willing to allow to transfer in from other schools. And there's language below under setting limits that tells you that the max that you can allow to transfer in is either 10% of all resident high school students, or 40, whichever is less. So you'll be establishing that number at your January meeting. You'll also be determining and announcing the number of students that you're allowing to transfer out of Ennisburg. And that number can be no fewer than 5% of your resident students, or 10, whichever is less. Okay? So there's some clarity around numbers. You can choose to go more, but you can't choose to go less. We're required by statute to set those numbers in January. So in, on the next sheet, it gives guidance on the preliminary determinations by school board. So you'll see that what I just told you that we need to do in February, there's a firm deadline of March 1st established in statute about students applying for school choice. So I'm gonna talk with you a little later about application process and how that's going to work. This shows you what to do in terms of, or what we have to do, what we have to follow, the actions of the receiving school. Kids get to identify their top three choices if they're applying to go to another high school by choice. They... There are steps in a lottery system. If you're butting up against the number that you've established, you have to have a non-discriminatory lottery in place to choose which children you're accepting. So the board doesn't make those decisions, other than you would direct us to have a non-discriminatory lottery to select those kids.
And we would need to come up with what that looked like.
Um, yeah.
For, okay.
Yeah. And then all notification about which families is given in writing which kids are coming by April 15th. I have attached two resources. I will email you this as well. The guidance on the limits document and the guidance on timelines document that I took most of this from. So I'm gonna have you turn the page one more time. This was... I did this this summer. This was the letter that we were intending to send out in January to families in both Richford and in Ennisburg. Because those are our two... We already have our other three towns, Bakersfield, Berkshire, and Montgomery are choice towns. So those kids can go anywhere. But Richford and Ennisburg students are non-choice towns. So if they want to go to a school that's not their resident school, they have to apply through the school choice application process. So turn the page one more time. We will be using this state form moving forward. So I think that we have had some confusion because we've kind of named it the Ennisburg School Choice Form, and we named it the Richford School Choice Form, which is a little confusing. So that means that some kids thought this whole process, like if they're in one school and they want to come to Ennisburg, that they applied to Ennisburg. When in actuality, they need to give their application to their resident school. It gets signed off by their resident school before it ever gets to us to consider. So we should be receiving these applications not from individual schools. We should be receiving these from sending schools. So this is to clear up our process. Our existing form is almost exactly the same thing, other than it has each of our high schools' names on those forms. And I think that that might be where some of our confusion has come from. So we're gonna... We're gonna use the standard state form as we move forward. We're gonna follow these deadlines and make sure that once that deadline has passed, we go through that process. And then we're not accepting. By statute, we cannot accept late choice applications. There are some, if you dig in to the statute, there are some exceptions, like if a child started with you and then moved. There are exceptions for them to be able to finish with you and not have to move or reapply. But other than that, it's pretty clear about that timeline. So I wanted you to see all of that in black and white. And we'll be hitting it again in January as we begin the process.
Is this the same, like, sort of airfield kid?
Yes.
God. Uh, so what... What happens when we merge? If we merge?
So you won't... When you merge, you'll set policy around choice.
Between the two schools together?
Right. So you have inter-district choice. So you won't have to really do this work?
So we'll count all both Richford and Ennisburg residents to... Into this formula?
No, because they will be essentially... I mean, it's gonna depend on how your board policy is developed. In my mind, they'll be resident students because you're one district.
Right. So we combined all the resident students from Richford and Ennisburg and...
Oh, to calculate.
To calculate.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's not what I thought you were saying. I thought you were talking about ADM numbers.
Nope. So that's how you do it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, to me, this is a little bit confusing.
Well, wait a minute, Rick. Now that I've just said that out loud, I would think that's how you would do it financially. But I guess I would need some clarity because they are still going to be two separate schools. And if you had one number, we'd have to go through this with policy moving forward. Get one number, and you're gonna accept 60 kids combined between the two. Probably neither school would have the capacity to do all of those. So we might have to have policy about in and out by school. But they're gonna have inter-district... They would be able to have choice, the kids in Ennisburg and Richford. So we would really only be dealing with these choice applications from outside of FNESU if we merged.
Okay.
See what I'm saying about the number, like...
Yeah, well, so...
Yeah, 'cause you can't put them all in one bill.
Yeah, so, I mean, how does that... If we're gonna follow the law, and we're gonna... If we count Richford's residents, does that mean Ennis... The Ennisburg school has to accept the minimum number of students?
We'll have to get guidance on that. You're asking the hard question, like you always do, and I appreciate that. The merge part will be so new to all of us. We're gonna have lots of questions like that about how it works.
Okay.
So I think as a new unified board, we'll be setting policy on how Richford kids go in, and Richford kids go in, and Richford.
Right.
And those movements there. You will be setting those numbers for the district as a whole, for how many kids you can lose and how many kids you can take in. I would think that the kids that are coming into the district are gonna follow that formula in terms of whether they can come into the district at all. And once they're in the district, you're gonna have some ability through your board policy to say, "Ennisburg's too crowded. You can come in, or you're going to Richford, or this person, or we're only taking X and X."
Any other questions? So to file that question away, Rick, for when we start the work of the new merge.
I'll never remember.
You land on it. School safety update. We... I've told you about all the trainings for Alice. We're at the place where we're doing parent information sessions, and I'm a little behind on this part. I had hoped to have a date set with Rachel, Eric, Michelle, and Nathan for our parent training in Ennisburg. And I haven't done that. I'm the one who dropped the ball on that. So I'll try to get to that tomorrow. I'll email it out once I have it. So we're... We have our first parent training in Berkshire tonight. We're going to Richford next week. The week after is Montgomery. And we're still waiting to establish Bakersfield and Ennisburg. And then a letter will push to all families communicating that. By the end of the month, we'll practice our first drill with kids. We're gonna dribble it in slowly, transitioning to what the counter measures are. The first one we'll be practicing with kids is evacuating the building and going, heading to a rally point. That'll be the first thing that they practice.
And kids will know it's a drill, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We will always indicate that it's a drill.
Okay.
And we're not having, like, parents pick them up at a rally point, or we're just...
No.
Practicing going to.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on that? And then in terms of Act 46 update, it will say that, you know, November is getting close. The state board has been working hard to determine what the metrics will be to define which Section 9 proposals they'll potentially accept. They have looked at contiguous borders. They've looked at whether or not communities have had 706B study committees. It seems like that's something they're looking hard at. They've asked for information from the Agency of Education to indicate of all the communities who have yet to merge, which of them actually went through the process of a 706B? Which of them actually went through the process of a warned public vote? And we're able to identify that we've done those things twice. Some of the communities have not. They also are trying to get closer to other metrics for determining that decision. One of the things that they're looking at is a differential in per pupil spending of greater than 20%. They're trying to get at the debt proportion in a roundabout way through per pupil spending. Can you remember what the other... I just filed this in the wrong folder before I left the address.
Results of a 706 vote, differences in debts.
So does it seem as though... Well, no, I guess I... They don't know.
Morgan watched the meeting.
Yeah.
I'll send you something that has the links to all the information that I just shared. And the other... There are two other criteria that I can't remember off the top of my head. But I'll send that to you in a link tonight. He watched the state board meeting, and it clearly seemed like, from his perspective, that they were asking questions and talking about meetings they were gonna have near the end of November. So I think it would be pretty remarkable at this point if they really did come out early with a state plan. We're not seeing a lot of signs that that's potentially going to happen. Did they ever get to the conversation about articles of agreement? So we still don't have... We sent a letter. We were looking at... They made comments in the Articles of Agreement about board membership as of July 1. And they... It was really rigid. It was chair and clerk, whoever was in the chair and clerkscy as of July 1. But there was no contingency or provision for how do you fill one of those if someone moves away? Or someone says, "I don't want to do that, that work on the new board." There was no contingency for that. So we just sent a letter asking for them to consider if it can't be those two, what other way can you fill that seat? Because what I could envision happening is if you had one person that couldn't fulfill that obligation for whatever reason, we would never get a quorum to do the work. And there is going to be a lot of work that that transition board will have to do to be prepared for a merge.
So they were gonna make the chair and the clerk automatically onto the other board?
Just the transition board. So from the time the statewide plan drops until you can have an election to get a new board, all that work would have to go through the transition board, which would be budget work and other things.
Policies.
Establishing a lot of the protocols, your own Articles of Agreement, all those pieces. So we're looking for guidance. We're hoping that they're willing to attend to. It might not always be chair and clerk in these new boards.
So on the 30th of November, what are they gonna do? Just call you all into and tell you what it is, or just say it in an email?
I suspect it'll be similar to how we got... I'm totally guessing. I think it'll be similar to how we got the AOE plan. We'll be hitting refresh all day, waiting for the plan to come through.
Well, they have to do it in a warned public...
Oh, they do. I missed that part.
Somebody's gonna be camped out there probably.
That'd be fun. I'll go to that one.
I'll go to that one.
Really?
Where is it? Where's it gonna be?
You wanna go to that one?
Yeah, it might be fun.
It might be fun.
Only if you're a fly in the wall, I think.
You need different fun in your life.
I mean, if it's in wherever we went, where'd we go?
Newark.
Barnett?
I don't know. Wherever that town is.
You went to Newark.
Right, in a convenient...
Newark.
Yeah.
Convenient, specialized location.
Yes, they are.
I don't wanna drive to Barnett.
This place is nine hours away from anything, so people won't show up.
So anything else on Act 46? I mean, the story is, we won't... We really aren't gonna know. There's lots of speculation. It sounds like there's heated debate on some of the Act 46 groups chats that are happening online. But it's all speculation at this point. I have in my notes that you... That I was supposed to bring teacher retention survey back. I gave that to you last time. But did you have any questions? Anything you wanted to discuss on that?
I had one question on it. Did you go back and look at the ones that leave? The teachers that leave less than, you know, one or two, three years? Was there any correlation between where they were living?
I can't tell where they're living because I didn't ask that question.
But some of them did say location.
Right.
Yeah, but yeah.
So... And I was wondering if we can get an idea of, from that, whether they're leaving, you know, they came to the county, they moved to the county, and then they moved out of the county? Or they were actually communing to the county...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
For that job?
We could... I could get that, get at that, not through this. But I could get at that another way.
'Cause I think that that... If we can figure out, tease that out, that might be a little bit important.
We'll look at that.
Okay.
And then the last thing is, did we... Maybe we did this. Did we ask them to vote last time on who's representing them on the SU board?
We did not.
So Caroline's now on board. She's replacing Suzie, who was serving on the SU board. So right now, your SU representatives are Michael Horgan and Michael Wright. And there's one more seat that we need someone to take on the SU board on behalf of Ennisburg. We meet monthly, September, October, November, December. We have a tentative January date in there that we sometimes need and sometimes don't, depending on when local budgets are warned. We'll have an April reorganizational meeting. And then we will have to have a July reorganizational meeting. Those two will be because of the merge. Or will the July one be because of a proposed merge? So...
When are they?
I can tell you. So the next meeting is October 16th.
So it's the third Tuesday of the month?
Not always. November 5th.
Which is a Monday. First Monday of the month.
It's no pattern, to be honest.
I need a pattern.
There are too many meetings to have a pattern.
That's exactly why I need a pattern.
December 18th. Seems like third Tuesdays often work, but not always. January, if this is helpful.
Rick said he can do it.
Rick will do it? So you need to make a motion to nominate Rick.
Motion to nominate Rick Bartholomew for the supervisor union.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick.
There's... So there's... How is that set right now? There's three from Ennisburg?
Three from each town.
Okay.
Plus one non-voting member of the Northern Mountain Valley Unified Meeting School District.
Voting member?
She is a voting member. Really?
What's Northern?
So non-operating, because they don't run a school. They only get one seat.
That's their name?
In districts that run...
Three seats?
On the SU board. So in July, that's all gonna change. In theory, each of the two boards in our SU, if that's the direction the state goes...
So it's Northern Mountain Valley?
Unless that changes post statute.
Okay.
So right now, 16 members.
It's a good group.
That's all I have for you.
Okay.
Who's next?
Looks like... Are we going back up?
To Rachel?
We're going back up to Morgan.
Everything on my report is informational, so I'm gonna actually go ahead and try to answer questions on, you know, the data that I dumped on you. We should have the tuition bills out towards the end of this week, beginning of next week. So in your next report, I'll be able to tell you, concurrently, where those numbers are.
So I had to read your email very slow. And I can't, like, that's the one about the per pupil rate?
The high school choice form?
The...
The enrollment one?
It was the one about our per pupil spending, how when your numbers go down, your per pupil goes up. However, when it doesn't... Did you get that?
It will not make sense, no matter what.
So then there was like that weird formula. So I guess in a nutshell...
So in a nutshell, your equalized pupils are one of the four levers that impacts your tax rate.
Right.
As your... As your October 1 enrollment declines, eventually your equalized pupils decline. And as it goes up, it, equalized people goes up. So there's a lot more factors than just what your October 1 enrollment is.
Right.
But if you look at the number of kids you had this October 1 compared to the number of kids you had two years ago, if that number's going down, you should be preparing for your
Tax rate to go up.
Equalized people to go down, your tax rate to go up. Everything else being the same.
Okay. So... But then there was also this weird formula that...
So the state does a lot in the background to those October 1 numbers before they come up with equalized pupils. So if you're losing elementary kids but gaining high school kids, you're probably coming out okay.
Yeah, okay.
Because they give a greater weight to high school kids.
But it looks like we're losing middle school and high school, so we're gonna go down.
That's what I anticipate. They're also, in theory, in the next budget, merged with Richford.
Oh, right.
And they've seen some increase in their high school, so they wash out.
Okay. That's what I... That's the nutshell I needed. Okay, thank you.
So we talked about, uh... There's seven early college students this year.
Yep.
Is it worth trying to get... 'Cause we came up with it, that it's actually policy and not law for the early college student, right? I mean, that's the... They... The education department decided that we could not count those in our average daily membership. Couldn't find a law that addressed the early... How that was.
Yeah.
Do we try to get... How do we go about it? And is it worth trying to change that? I mean, so, you know... So if you multiply seven by 1.4, that gives us 10, 10 students that we gotta count, count towards our average daily membership.
I think probably, if that's something you're interested in pursuing, you and I could figure out how to put that in a letter. And then you could sign it and send it to the state board.
Okay.
Just as a heads up. This is a concern that we're feeling in our district. It's got a significant impact.
I think those guys are trying to get in there.
And then kind of leave it up to them to bring it up in their rulemaking or their policies.
Okay.
At some point, they're gonna be really happy to think about something other than Act 46.
Okay. All right. Let's do that.
So budget-wise, we're just kind of waiting to find out what happens with the merger, right?
For next year's budget. We are looking for some early indication. I'm now starting to think we won't get it. And so I will probably start reaching out to the four of you, just to start hammering away at some of the stuff that isn't really gonna be impacted. We will also need some guidance in terms of what you're comfortable warning in terms of teacher salaries, because we're negotiating with them. And we will... I'd be very surprised if we have a contract before we need to run a budget. So we're gonna have to come up with a number to add to their salary and tuck it in there.
Okay.
It's just unclear to me whether I'm gonna be asking you guys here or asking you guys in a larger board.
Well, we have to meet on November, right?
November's normally when you see your first look at the budget. But if we... I mean, they will have had two, I think, of their state board meetings by then. My understanding is they're gonna start pulling districts out at their next meeting. And so if they look at Ennisburg and Richard and say, "That's too hard to deal with right now. Let's pump that to the end of the month," we may be moving forward with kind of two separate processes. we may be moving forward with kinda two separate processes with the towns. If they go take you guys first and say, well, let's just plan on putting them together, and you're put aside, then I think it would be wise for us to start budgeting as if that's gonna happen.
Right.
Is that it?
That's it.
You guys need to go, right? Or you got a minute?
Uh, I don't need to go.
Oh, you don't need to go?
I don't.
Michelle?
Can I, can I cut in?
Yeah.
And I've got some gentlemen here who, uh, would like to ask about senior privileges.
I was really gonna make them wait.
You can't, let's keep moving.
No, that's fine, go ahead, come-
No, but stand in front, can I stand in front?
Sure.
Sure.
Well, Jonathan, you're on camera, just so you know, it's right there.
Oh, for those of you that-
Jonathan, do you know everybody?
What?
Do you know everybody?
Almost everybody, I was just gonna introduce myself, but you cut me off.
Okay, so why don't we introduce ourselves?
Okay.
Morgan DeBelle, business manager.
I don't.
Carol Anne Clark.
Yep.
You know me.
Michael Horrigan.
Rick Bartholomew.
Yeah.
Polly Rico.
Amanda.
Yep. So, I'm Jonathan Puckett, I'm our student body president this year, and I'm just gonna present these senior privileges. It's basically the same thing as last year.
I'll pay us for copies, you have to pass them. You give it to them.
Okay.
Was the vote total really low on the presidential run or?
No. Yeah, so it's basically the same thing as last year.
Thank you.
We're almost.
Almost. Thank you.
Do you guys not have enough copies?
Thanks, Michael.
Did your partner crime have anything to say? I mean, did you see back there?
I was told people are-
Yeah, proficient.
Oh, okay.
Whatever that means.
So, yeah, it's with the new grading system, so, basically with sports, it'd be the same level of sports as it would be for the senior privileges.
Any motion?
Correct.
To accept these?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 There you go.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question, Jonathan.
Yes.
Which you guys want?
Yes, we did.
Regulation.
Yep, it was like eight one.
Oh, there you go.
So, they're not immediately in place.
Like, that doesn't mean tomorrow.
Yeah, that stuff needs to go, uh, get out to seniors, and we need to get paperwork back, so probably not until next, until one day. Oh, that's not all that bad. It's not all that bad. It's that table keeps, keeps nice and clean.
Yes, sir.
All right, good job.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, Michelle.
All right. So, I, I put in the class size policy report, and, um, make sure that didn't generate any questions. Looking at this number here, it was about, uh, our number of students that we, it looks like we've lost a couple in our elementary school. So, um, but again, comparing it with our policy, it seems to be we're, we're meeting the requirements of that policy. We'd like to see the numbers flipped around, where our K through two numbers are, aren't averaging nineteen kids per class, but instead averaging sixteen, like our grades three through five, but that's, it is what it is. And everybody's doing all they can to work really hard to make that work well for our younger students. Then I moved in there and put down that I would share Sback results with you, cause I thought I could when I wrote this on October fourth, but then I can't, because it was embargoed another week to kinda work it through at the state level. And then I read an email at two forty-seven saying I could share those with you, but I left the elementary school without seeing that. So, I'll bring those back next month.
That's fine.
And we'll just test and data, we'll do it all in the same month.
Right, so.
Sorry, you didn't even pee?
Uh, oh, yeah, I've studied, I've done all that. I do wanna s- I do tend to bring in comparisons to schools around, so I'm still trying to get some results from, like, Highgate really lines up with our demographics well, and, and Sheldon. So, I, I wanna see if I can get those numbers for next month anyways, but, um, so, I'll bring them forward in, in November.
Did they have a good, I went to try to find those a while ago online, uh, they seem relatively hard to get.
So, they're not there yet?
No, not, not the, the historical, like, last year's and-
I can help you figure out how to get to that.
Okay.
You can, you can see anything that, as long as the N is over, the number of students assessed in any category of grade levels over ten, it's public.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a pretty cold data.
That's why, that's actually why I did it.
Okay, so then moving into action items, I gave you the continuous improvement plan last month. Although, Michael, I don't think you actually know that, and then Carol Anne, you are here, so, I've got one copy left with me. If you want it and wanna save some heavy reading, I guess, but, um, didn't know if you had questions about it, if you'd had time to look at it a second time after we'd met last time, and, um, if, if it looked okay, if I could get a motion for approval for that plan. Any questions?
You good with it?
Yep. I move.
Signify by, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, and Carol Anne, if you have questions after we catch you.
Well, that's what we were just talking about, I don't remember if we approved ours last time or not, I put it on here just in case.
Well, let's go through it formally.
Okay.
I think you were coming back to it.
Um, we can, we can come back. Anyway, um, I also made a note about Sback data embargoes, um, so I'll have that for next month, uh, for you. It was lifted tonight at like four o'clock, so, I figured I'd wait. Um, so, I do have class size report, uh, our numbers are down from last year. Uh, that's primarily due to some small classes coming in, um, last year, and this year, sixth and seventh grade are small. Um, and, uh, we have, I put a note on the bottom, we always have a handful of move outs. We already had, um, I think nine kids moving in and out just since the start of school. So, um, typically, like, three of the move outs, of the four kids who moved out, three were within Franklin County schools. So, they're often families who kind of move between our school, Richford, um, Sheldon. So, that seems to happen quite often, so we, we got four, we lost four families, um, so, we have apparently a couple more possibly coming, there's one that we've heard might be coming, but it hasn't appeared yet. So, it's, we're, sometimes there are revolving door for, um, for students, so it can change a lot. Um, but we're right now on kind of the lower end of the age clusters, we're not exceeding it anywhere, which is really good. Um, but our number, our student count is down, and I think will be down until we get the current-
Fifth grade.
Current fifth grade.
Yeah, the current fifth grade's big, and then I think the current third grade is big.
Yeah, forty-one and fifth this year.
So, in a couple years, we'll be back up over a hundred again. Um, and then I just wanted to formally put in the minutes, um, a recognition of Amber Farnum, um, for, uh, getting outstanding teacher of the year. She was recognized last week at a ceremony at UVM, um, and it was really special, so.
Awesome.
Nice. And, yeah, this, was it approved?
No, I, I don't see that in the record.
Okay, so, brought it, uh, we gave it to you last week, but this is for both Eric and I, um. So, we need a motion for it to be-
Motion to approve.
Continuous improvement plan?
Plan.
I move. Did, or did you move, Michael?
I'm in.
You move, I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Eric?
Um, mine is just, uh, doing the things that the, of this that Lynn Putz app told me to do, um. So, I-
Good work.
Do the CIP last, last time, so I figured I'd better be on the ball this time. And then I gave you Sback results that apparently I wasn't supposed to give you, so, um.
So, I just gotta say-
Really following through. It's after four.
Right.
Yeah. You're good.
Um, I, I, I don't have comparative data. Last, last year, I was able to kinda give you about four or five different schools in the area to give you some context for, um, these scores. Polly probably has an idea of what BFA did at this point. Um, it, honestly, we, we're, you know, I'm clearly not satisfied with these scores, um, here. Uh, we were hoping for something a little different, uh, given that the test was moved to the ninth grade rather than the eleventh grade. Um, so, we're sort of digging in a little deeper as to what, what occurred here. Um, and I'm, I'm really interested to see what other schools are seeing with this test and, and, and it shift to ninth grade as well. If, um, you know, if we were the ones to, to just stay in this sort of realm, or whether a lot of schools were seeing some of these results as well. Um, so, again, without having a lot of the comparative data, I, I don't have a ton to say on this write-off. Um, but I can certainly bring it back once I have, um, more data to, to show you in terms of what other schools are doing.
I can't speak to the math part, but just looking at the test too, it didn't, even though it changed grade level, the questions didn't seem to change.
So, it, none of the, none of the interim assessments scaled down to ninth grade.
Exactly.
So, there were a lot, all the interim assessments were at a eleventh grade level, and they, and ninth graders had to do the best they could with that, so.
And they pulled a handful of eighth grade item questions.
And, and threw them in, so they didn't, they didn't really make a ninth grade assessment. So, that's why I'm, I'm very curious to see what other local areas, other schools are seeing in terms, uh, in terms of results. Um, one thing that, that I did notice that I, you know, I can, I can point to is that we had a pretty significant jump in, uh, our free reduced lunch percentage, uh, students, um, this year to, to last year. Although I don't have last year's numbers on there, but if you compare, um, our percentage to the statewide percentage at twenty percent, um, and ours at fifty-seven, um, it's, it's interesting to see the numbers move as free reduce moves one way and what have you. That gets to the, the whole equity gap discussion, um, and, uh, you know, what we're trying to do to, to, to kinda combat that, so. Um, I can talk more next month, once I have more data to give you.
Well, comparison data that we, we can all share.
Um, the other thing I needed to bring to you was the class size report. Um, you know, I've, I've done mine differently in that, uh, I, I've gotta list all our classes here that, that are under that fourteen student limit. Um, they are all mainly singleton specialty classes that we offer, uh, with the exception of our VTC pre-count class, which has two sections at under thirteen, at thirteen, and our CB Chem class that has three sections at thirteen. Um, and JROTC is, is, is low, with five sections of averaging about eight. Um, but everything else, uh, there, as you can see, are, are pretty much singleton classes, um, that are either running for a semester long. Um, most of them are semester long, there are a couple year longs, like a French or something like that, um, but those are our numbers. And you can see the little chart on the top of the page is, you know, where the, the range is supposed to be.
I'll come on to my next one.
Other than that, if I have any questions, that's all I have.
Is your driver's ed dilemma getting?
Nope. I mean, uh, we, um, we're, we're running with what we have. I've got Rick in the afternoon and, and Kathy during the day, and we're running, I mean, we're getting twenty-four kids, twenty-three kids, so, that's better than-
Better than the alternative.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know whether I'll have them both next semester, um, but we still are advertising for driver's ed, so.
Any questions for Eric?
Nope.
I'll get through everybody, okay?
Yep. Through everybody, right?
We, we did Lynn for board business, set future agenda items.
Question from rec committee.
Oh.
Michelle must've got an action item.
I, yeah, I think we went quickly, cause we were all trying to do the CIP and then the class size policy, but I did have one other action item listed on my, um, board report, to see if it was possible for, uh, don't, people to donate sick days to one individual who's been out for, for a bit of days up here. I mean, we've done it in the past, it encouraged me to go with a certain number of-
We usually number, don't we usually give them a number, Morgan, or do we?
Generally, you've limited the number that staff can give as individuals and the number that a person can use.
Right.
Oops.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yep.
So, we're done.
So, what are the numbers?
Well, I never, remember where we've been using?
Did we, I don't, oh, I can look.
I don't remember what we were using.
I almost feel like it's two, that's what I was just gonna say.
Two per?
Two per person can give, and we, didn't we say take up to, I think it's twelve a gram I had, but I don't think I did.
I thought ten wasn't, whatever.
What, ten?
We did it for-
Did you do it in May? I think you may have done it in May.
May, yes.
There was a kitchen step.
It was a, two, it was a- Yes.
Ten, does ten sound like-
Ten sounds fine, yeah.
Okay.
Two days, for a total of ten.
More than two from, per person in total.
So, we'll need a motion for that.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
And so, two per person, up to ten days.
Up to ten total, yeah.
Um, and we'll need side letters from the unions.
Side letters from the unions.
I, I would encourage the people who are on the negotiations committee to look at the sick bank that we have, and whether it makes sense to get rid of that.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Question from the rec committee.
Yeah, so the rec committee has asked that I bring a possible usage, or at least a discussion about, they've been looking all over the village about putting an ice rink. Talked about Maple Park, talked about the, the rec over at the fire station. And then it came up with the space out back here where it used to be by the parking, not in the parking lot, but I guess the, I haven't been out there, I don't know the parameters, but the lawn portion, and didn't know if that was something that the, um, board would entertain a conversation about. It's not a decision, but just like a conversation, if that would be something that we would do.
So, when I was a kid here and used the ice rink, it was all the parking lot.
Yeah, it was a whole parking lot, that's what I said, so I said I haven't-
There was no lawn that I remember being on.
No, there's, there's, oh, there's a lawn now, but-
Yeah, so, and I haven't been out there to see how-
But it's right up next to people's property, wouldn't you?
Well, it runs up against, it runs up against the-
House of peace.
Yeah, house of peace, right.
So, I, I did speak with Shawna about it.
Okay, yeah, what happened?
And, and, uh, the, the old shack there, that is, it's, it's really unusable.
Right.
Um, I mean, it's, it's storage for us right now, but, I mean, we've taken all the toilet, toilets and fixtures and everything out of there at this point.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure what the water access would be over there.
So, and that's the other conversation, is that we've talked with the fire department about accessing, or that, having them flood. Um, they're willing to have that conversation as well, so I guess it's just like, if it's a, if it's a, yeah, we'll talk about it, or it's like, no, we don't even wanna entertain that space. I don't know if it's even, I don't know if it's big enough, I don't even know.
I don't, I don't know that it's big enough, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of the size, I, I'm terrible, like, spatially.
Me too, I am too.
I'm trying to think if, if the, the Montgomery one would fit in there?
Would be big.
And, and I don't think it would fit in there.
No, it wouldn't.
You know, so, you have that, plus then you have the snow removal of that- You know, so you have that plus then you have the snow removal of that area and where does that go into the student lot there?
Correct, right, that would all those questions, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I think those are all questions. I I don't wanna say no to any any of this stuff, but I just think it's that would be a real tough spot, I think.
Can we can we look on our way out?
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're I know the shack, but I agree with Michelle. It used to be the whole.
Yeah.
Is there a reason they're not looking at the soccer fields by the ambulance bay?
Yeah, I I think they were thinking as far as access, like getting kids over there wasn't ideal. Kids walking over there until at least the sidewalk project gets underway. But then we were talking about Maple Park and the church even offered to allow people to access the the basement and everything. So there are options. They just wanna know if that was an option.
My knee my knee jerk reaction is no.
No, okay.
But I'm certainly.
I was just saying, Erica, I wonder what Bizbit would have to say if it was on our property and somebody got hurt.
Well, so if somebody gets hurt, somebody gets in a fight, the next person that's gonna be called is gonna be Eric. That's the first person that's gonna get called.
Sure the rec.
It's on school, but it is on the school property are liable.
No, so technically how it goes is because it's being sponsored by the Ennisburg Rec, the town's insurance would go first.
But there's still call.
Oh, yeah, it's not what you're you're following with Greg yesterday.
Insurance is.
And you're still gonna be listed on the lawsuit, so.
Had a there was a woman from Hazen that took us, I think you were there, that took a tumble out front. She's emailing us about her Dr. Bill, so.
Oh, Jesus.
So it happens.
Are you serious?
On camera, on camera, on camera.
Yeah.
What about the what about the soccer field?
So that's an that's interesting because you don't we don't utilize the soccer field at all in the winter. Yeah, and there's water access.
Just to map that.
I know, but that those I guess that's what they're asking, just some range terms and ideas.
Uh, there is water.
Is there hydrant?
There's not a is there hydrant? There's not a hydrant.
There I think there was water access coming straight out of the shack.
Yeah.
Here?
Oh, you're you're talking about over here? Oh, down the soccer field.
Soccer field. Soccer field.
The wreck.
The hydrant, the that the the pump gets shut off.
Yeah, I thought we shut that off.
So shut off by the village?
Yeah, well, we shut it off from the snack shack to that stub fountain.
Okay. Oh.
Wouldn't want the pipes freezing the snack model.
No.
But you but if you're if you're talking of having the fire department flood it for you.
Right. And it could have been the fire department, meaning opening up a hydrant or actually going to flood it. But these are all conversations we can sort out.
Maple Park is an awesome idea.
I know.
That's a great idea. I love that part of town.
It's great in the city.
I knew there's no traffic, really.
Exactly. And having the basement of the church available like that, that's great.
It takes the Ennisburg school name off of it as well, so you won't be getting those.
They won't know who to call.
Perhaps the soccer field idea, go to the church.
Yep, that's okay.
Another idea, if you want more from my end. I don't know what goes on down where they park all the the trailers after dairy day down by the Maple Fields. But that's a big area that's I feel underutilized in a lot of ways.
Right.
Just another location that's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Got a lot of parking, it's got a lot of.
Right, because we've been batting around the ice rink for we're on our third year and nothing ever comes of it that it's it would be nice to have.
I can't remember. A lot of kids would come to this.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, even in Montgomery, like tons of people go ice skating there, even not even from Montgomery, they just go ice skating.
It's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Think we're done.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sixteen.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Six something.